I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Norfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work of the school board. And on behalf of all school district stakeholders, Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file.
Yes, you have several items in the table file this evening. We do have a slide deck with some visuals for my superintendent operations and strategic plan update. We have a number of items in the consent agenda, some additional appointments, increase, decrease, changes in assignment. And we also have a resignation. That's the table file for this evening.
All right. Thank you for the update. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Seeing none, we will move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Do I have a second? By Amy. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I guess I have to remember the vote when I do this.
Do, yeah.
Uh, we now move into the public comment portion of our meeting. Nita, no public comments. So we'll move ahead to announcements and recognitions. Uh, Dr. Deb Henton, the executive director with M A S A is here to make a presentation. Dr. Hen, would you join us up here, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the school board, Dr. Hillman and members of the audience. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to present to our superintendent of the year, Dr. Matt Hillman, a check for a thousand dollars that he can use as a scholarship for a student and also a ring. It is a ring that you would be very familiar with. It's a class ring from Justin's, but it has, of course, the M A S A logo on it, and I know he will wear it with pride. So for people that have not heard much about the superintendent of the year, I'll just recap the selection process. And so we have a number of executive directors from other education organizations who help us select the individual from many applications that we received. So those leaders are from the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Education Minnesota, the Minnesota School Boards Association, the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals, the Minnesota Association of Rural Education Districts. So we're really pleased that they join us in this effort and help select the superintendent of the year. As I shared at the celebration at the middle school for Dr. Hillman, it would be very difficult for me to have to select that individual because we have so many qualified candidates. But Dr. Hillman clearly stood out this year and was selected as our superintendent of the year. Some of the criteria that is used is to look at leadership for learning. What have our candidates done to ensure that our students are achieving at the highest levels possible? What kind of communication do they offer? And we know that Dr. Hillman is a great communicator. His writing skills are phenomenal and he speaks so well. We're really grateful to have a representative with his type of communication skills. Professionalism is also another area that the people that are scoring the applications look at, and we know that he is the quintessential professional. Dr. Hillman is always leading with integrity, supporting his colleagues, valuing you as a school board and really working hard for his school community as a whole. And then finally, community involvement. And Matt has lived here, excuse me, Dr. Hillman, has lived here for quite some time, and we know that he is really engaged with the community and all different sectors of the community. So I congratulate you as school board members on having the superintendent of the year and one of four national finalists, and even though he was not selected, he's our finalist and our selected winner of the Minnesota Superintendent of the Year. And so we're very proud of you, Dr. Hillman, and grateful for your service. And to the school board members, thank you for allowing him to travel at times to accept this honor and to be present with others because we know that takes him away from the district. So we really appreciate all of you and all that you do, and congratulations to your entire school community and especially to you, Dr. Hillman.
Thank you, Dr. Henton. Thank you. Any other board members have any recognitions or announcements to make? Robert?
Well, I want to recognize our, the early education staff at the N C E C and the parent volunteers for putting on a successful inaugural carnival fundraiser at the N C E C last Thursday. They had food and games and bounce houses, a dunk tank, and it was very well attended. If success can be judged by the long faces and tears in the, on the eyes of the little ones having to leave at the end of the night, I would judge it as very successful. And special kudos to our district staff member who spent two hours at the dunk tank being repeatedly dunked in that cold water. And I hear, uh, Dr. Hillman, you've signed up to do that next.
Yes, I've been recruited for, I told them I have a three hundred and sixty-five day lead time on dunk tanks and they have. And I, I just want to follow up. It was, there's been a lot of events where I have felt like we were turning the corner from the pandemic, but this one was the, I think, the real one for me. Uh, this was the N C E's first carnival and just as Robert said, just the sheer joy on people's faces was, it was just wonderful and the parents in the community was, was really delightful. And these are our youngest learners who are just beginning their journey with the district. But I have to say, I think the measure of any good carnival is how much cotton candy is stuck to children's faces at the end of it. And if that is the measure, they won big time. So we even have a little photo of that later. So it was a wonderful event.
All right. Any other board members? Ben?
Thanks, Cory. And thanks to Dr. Henton. I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight and presenting, uh, the award on, right, to, to Dr. Hillman. And I did want to appreciate, or extend our appreciation as well from our Legislative Action Committee to the Association for certainly all the advocacy work that you've done this legislative session. You know, as the session comes to an end, I think we, we find ourselves in a in a good place and really appreciate the advocacy.
Thanks, Ben. Uh, I was also busy Thursday. I was double booked. I was hoping to be at the carnival, but my fifth grader was having her choir concert across campus at Greenville Park. So it was a busy night and like you said, Dr. Hillman, you know, it's a a good show, or, but I think both of you said it's a good show when, uh, a lot of people are there and certainly coming out of COVID, it felt like one of those first real big events, even though, you know, we've, we've been transitioning all this for a year plus, but Sam Richardson was putting on more chairs as we arrived. So we had a good showing at the choir and band concert for fourth and fifth grade, and it was great to see as well.
Hot and crowded is always a good sign, right?
Warm. Yes. People were taking layers off. All right, moving out. And then I think you had something as well, Dr. Hillman.
We've taken care of that, yep.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, we are now on to items for discussion and reports. First up is the Policy Committee Recommendation. Uh, Dr. Hillman presented the Policy Committee's recommendation on policy five sixteen.
Yes, policy five sixteen. This is not something that is on, up for regular review at this time. Working with our school nurses, we found a technical fix that needs to take place in the procedure document. This is one of the few policies that we have that requires the board to also adopt the procedures as well as the policy. And there's some language that prohibits school nurses from providing acetaminophen or ibuprofen to students. Students are able to have ibuprofen or acetaminophen at school as long as they have parent permission. We've learned that this is an equity issue. Um, our nurses are able to get access to acetaminophen and ibuprofen that they can have on hand. And of course, with parent permission, they would be able to provide that to students. What they tell me is that for many students, this could be the difference between them feeling well enough to stay in school for the day through just some of the routine kinds of things that school nurses do. So our proposal is to make a small modification in the procedure document to allow school nurses to distribute acetaminophen or ibuprofen with parent permission at school. That's the only change in the procedure. We're not asking you to approve this tonight. We'll ask you to approve it at the next board meeting.
All right. Any discussion on that? Jenny?
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. I just have a couple of questions regarding, um, those changes. The first one, I just wanted a clarification if, because it, it states, uh, pain relief, um, over the counter medications. I know aspirin is, falls into that category, but just to clarify, that is not included here.
Uh, it is, it is not in this revision. Um, I will ask the nurses if they would like to have that included. That very well could be something that could be included. It would be in that same vein as what we're talking about. Um, so I will ask if that's something that they feel should be included, and if they do, we'll make that modification for the next meeting.
Okay. And then my second question is, um, are the nurses going to be required to keep track? Keep a written record of each student that they would administer this over the counter medication to with the student name and then the dosage?
Yes, they, uh, have a detailed health record portion of Skyward, our student information system, where they keep those records. So I will validate that, but my assumption would be that what they, they, um, document everything else and any other kind of medication that they provide, if that's something that's been brought to them. So I, I believe that that will be the case, but I will validate that for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Amy?
Uh, just thinking of the aspirin question, they should double check because I believe there's a childhood syndrome associated with aspirin, and I'm not sure at what age that cutoff happens. And so there might be a difference between elementary school and teenagers.
Yeah, we'll check. I'm meeting with my Moona later this week, so I'll talk with her about that.
Any other comments? Robert?
Uh, on the, the paragraph below, the paragraph P, um, we talk about schools may obtain and epinephrine auto injectors and administer in, in an emergency. Uh, I'm just wondering if we need to, if we need another paragraph since we just approved, uh, policy five fifteen point five on naloxone use, which is in similar vein, um, in an emergency situation, whether that needs to be, um, addressed in this policy as well, or just referred to.
Okay, we will take a look at that. That hadn't been part of the update, but we will take a look at it while we're doing that, too.
Any other questions? Okay, move ahead to B, school handbook transition. Dr. Hillman will provide an update on the plan to move these handbooks to the district website from their current print form.
So I've shared with this, with the board a couple of times in the past, but just wanted to give you an update and helping you see the pathway uh, to where we ask you to do an authorization of this change, uh, in July. So as you know, uh, we have been working to take the traditional PDF handbook approach and turn it into a more user-friendly and mobile-friendly, um, resource for families. So let's just imagine that I'm a parent who has children at three different schools, which we have quite a few people who do. If I need to find the information about attendance reporting, I have to go to three different handbooks, right? Or if I'm, have a question about how another particular item works at a school, I have to look through three different handbooks. And so the concept that we're continuing to work on Newger Communications with is more of a vertical, vertically articulated family guide that would have each of those, would be arranged by topic as opposed to school. And so it will give you a pre K twelve look at how each of those topics is handled. Now, in the past, for board members and for people who are watching, every year we've had you approve the handbooks at each building. And what we've learned is that that is unusual for boards to approve the building level handbooks every year. And what we know is that most of the handbooks involve two things. Either they point to policy that you have already adopted or they point to operational items that administrators are empowered to do at their building. And so Anita and I continue to do a fairly detailed review of each of those items. And if there's something that does not meet those criteria, we would bring that item to you for individual action before putting it as part of this family resource guide. We're still trying to come up with a creative name for it. So if anybody has a creative name for it, we'd be all ears. One example of the kinds of things we would have bring to you or any changes in fees. That's just an example of something that doesn't fall within policy, nor does it necessarily fall within administrative oversight. So we're continuing to move forward, but I, I just want board members to be prepared that I am going to ask you to take an action that authorizes us as administrators to move, uh, this information that had been previously approved annually by, in the handbooks to something that we will only be bringing things to you that do not fall within operations and or, uh, existing policy. For clarity, there are a few handbooks that will still come to you. The Student Citizenship Handbook, that is essentially our discipline policy. You will, uh, uh, approve those changes every year as you have in the past. And then the Early Ventures and the Kid Ventures handbooks are different than any of the other handbooks that we have because that being our for-pay licensed childcare program has some specialized rules within D H S that don't necessarily fall within the other items of a traditional school handbook. So those we will continue to ask you to approve each year. But what we know is that the Policy Committee and the board has taken quite a bit of time over the last few years to improve the language in the handbook. So we feel transitioning it to, um, again, a more mobile-friendly uh, situation is going to be helpful for everyone. It's going to reduce the amount of work that the board has to do. Again, you've already approved the policies, you've already empowered the administrators to make some of those decisions. We should let that play out and then have you just approve the items that would be added or changed that don't fall within those two categories. Um, so again, I would ask you to approve this at the July meeting, but I just want to give you a long enough runway to be thinking about it. And if you have any questions or other updates that you'd like us to consider, um, again, I envision someone who's trying to look for this information at ten o'clock at night and trying to pull out a, and we know most families now, if we can have it on their phone and they can find it, it's going to be more convenient and user-friendly to them. So that's the rationale. We've talked about it before. I'm previewing it for you so you're prepared, uh, for further discussion, um, in July. That's the report.
So you want to have any comments or questions for Dr. Hillman? Amy?
First, I want to say I'm excited about this. It's time we move their handbooks up into the twenty twenties and, uh, out of the nineteen nineties. So that's great, and I love that we'll be going online. I love the family approach. I love the possibility of multimedia sections. So we could have little videos and things in it. All great. My question is, how are we going to handle our non-English speaking families and what can we do to help them?
So we have long translated the handbooks. And so that will be the same as we, as we move forward, there'll be a translation section for it as well.
Amy?
Follow up. Yes, is that just Spanish or do we do any other languages?
So primarily, the, the largest language that we have is Spanish. That is the only one that we consistently translate into. Uh, we don't, we haven't had enough, uh, other, enough, enough users of other languages to where it was, we were able to make those kinds of changes at this time.
So Google Translate, is that something we can build into the system or is that something that the user imposes or both?
Um, it probably can be a little bit of both. I have to go back and look. We've talked with Newger Communications about how to do the translation in line. And I just have to go back to take a look at where we landed on that within the scope of the project that we've agreed upon.
Anyone else?
It's not. We can certainly provide the directions, right, for how to do that translation.
Anyone else? I'll just say as a parent, I think this is a great idea. As a board member, I think it's even better idea. Having sat on the Policy Committee the last two years and going through every one of these, scrutinize them, and then doing it again as it comes to the board is a tremendous amount of time. I'm sure we can't quantify the amount of time that goes into these, but I'm sure this will be a nice savings of time and also a better product for people to use.
And we can update it more easily. It's, we're not going to update it monthly. It will be, we most likely look at updates a couple of times a year so that people know what the rules are, we're playing by, but it does make it simpler to use. And again, um, something that people will be able to use from their phone. And again, we just want to be able to provide a service to families so that they can find the information that they need.
All right, we'll move ahead to Superintendent Operations and Strategic Plan Update. Dr. Hillman will provide an update about district operations and examples of work underway to achieve the district's vision, strategic commitments and benchmarks. This report will include a review of the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session.
Yeah. So to begin with, I wanted to just share with board members that, um, really exciting week. Last week, we had an opportunity to review the applications for the second round of applicants for our Grow Your Own Grant. And so just as a reminder, uh, the district received this Grow Your Own Grant from, uh, M D E in two thousand and twenty-two. And, uh, quoting from our website, nor the Northfield Teacher Teaching Fellows Program is open to applicants who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color attending or planning to attend a Minnesota Professional Educator Licensing and Standards Board-approved Teacher Preparation Program. Um, our district in partnership with the Healthy Community Initiative, um, we recently approved four, uh, new applicants to be able to move forward in our second round of funding. We, um, had five applicants that we approved last year, and we had our first graduate, um, from the program this fall, who is working on uh, passing the appropriate tests to get her full teaching licensure. So we are excited to see this program roll in its second year. And so the criteria for this is that the applicants, um, must be a member of the BIPOC community. Uh, they must be a graduate of Northfield Public Schools, or they could be a parent of a current Northfield Public School student, or they could live within the Northfield Public Schools district boundaries, or they could be a current Northfield Public Schools employee. Now, what fellows receive from the grant is they can receive up to twenty-five hundred dollars of tuition assistance per year. This is what we call a last dollar funding. So, um, the team helps those folks work through all of the other financial aid, and then they can get this twenty-five hundred dollars after they've leveraged all of the other financial aid that they have available. They get some, uh, one-on-one advising support through the program and a connection with a mentor teacher. This middle part is something that we learned about this year that we have to improve upon. Um, we now have a good system with the Northfield Community College Collaborative for that ongoing advising. So that was an area that we're continuously improving, um, from last year. And then there is a stipend, uh, to assist with other living or college costs that could be up to a thousand dollars per year. And again, this is all paid by the grant. And so we're excited to share that all four of these young women who will be, um, receiving this funding beginning, uh, this summer are actually associated with the Northfield School District in some way, shape, or form, either as a, an educational assistant or having worked as a, um, as a tutor. So every one of them has a connection to the district. So we want to congratulate Zoshi Ohaka, Anna Marquez Gaton, Anna Gallego, and Lupema Salis Castillo. These four young women, um, are the newest Northfield Teaching Fellows, and we are very excited. Um, math teacher, couple of E L teachers and, uh, an elementary ed, uh, focus. So very exciting to see these folks pursue, uh, their degrees. So um, I hope that if you have a chance to see them, if you see them, just congratulate them. And we're very excited. They're very excited for it. And we're very pleased to have that funding from M D E. It's a four-year grant. So this is year two. So with that, we're going to go to the legislative session of the report. And Tim, I'm going to plug in here. So I gave you an outline, uh, in my report, and I'm just going to give a higher level overview here and then allow for dialogue amongst board members. Um, but I think it's always important to start with our why, and this is a photo from, uh, the carnival that Robert and I talked about. It doesn't get better than kids and cotton candy, right? I, I thought if that wasn't a wonderful photo, I, I don't know what is, but I think that we just always can, as I was at that event, I think of those kids being, you know, in kindergarten next year. I think what, how old I'm going to be thirteen years from now when they graduate. Um, and just thinking about the future and what this legislative session really means um, for our youngest learners and the change and the positive things that they're going to experience um, as a result of it. So we always think about that through the lens of our kids and, uh, and cotton candy, I suppose. So I think the only way to describe this legislative session is sweeping. It is most likely for education. I think it's fair to say it's one of the most consequential, if not the most consequential sessions since the Minnesota Miracle in the early nineteen seventies. Uh, it touches nearly every aspect of schools in some way, shape, or form. And I think it's going to take some time for people to even really know what the right questions are to ask about the outcome of the legislative session because it is that sweeping. And I know sometimes when we have sweeping, um, legislation like this that results in substantial change, I understand that sometimes we can recoil and be frustrated. Uh, and that's understandable, but I really encourage board members in our community to, to look at this as a truly once in a generation opportunity. I'm very excited about all of the change that's coming forward. Um, I also understand there's going to be difficulty from that change, but I am excited about the opportunities that are ahead of us. So I'm just going to highlight just a few items because it's a three hundred-plus-page bill. And while I'm working on being more brief in my presentations, I don't think anybody wanted a three hundred and eleven-page bill presentation tonight, except for Val maybe, but we're not getting that tonight. So I think the first piece is finance. This has been the core of what we have been advocating for on our Legislative Action Committee, um, which Robert will talk about after I'm done. It, I just, I still pinch myself in the morning, um, to read to make sure it's still true that after a long time and a lot of hard work by many, many people, the basic formula will be indexed to inflation. And that is pretty awesome. I've shown you the slide before about if we had had the formula linked to inflation over the last thirty years, Northfield School District would have had six point seven million dollars more in its revenue budget this year. That's the power of compounding inflation and just those small increases over time. No, I'm not saying it's perfect, right? It's a floor of two percent and a ceiling of three percent, and we all know where inflation is at right now. I just cannot tell you how meaningful it is to be able to have this because it allows us to do better planning. It allows us to see a little further around corners. It allows us to be, uh, more certain in some of the programming that we offer and sustain. It's, it's very exciting. And so, um, I just, I'm still, it's, it's thrilling that we finally got the formula linked to inflation. I think, um, almost as exciting to me as another item that we have worked very hard for, for a long time, which is the provision that allows locally elected school boards to renew operating levies that the voters have already approved. So very few, if any, operating levy renewal elections are failed by their communities. The data over the last decade shows it's, I'm going to say nearly everyone, because maybe there's one that I'm not aware of that, that did not pass. But it is literally a ninety-nine percent renewal passage rate. So this is a good governance bill. Number one, it's just, I think it's just good governance and it's just good policy. Um, but it also has the effect of allowing school districts to be more certain in their funding over a period of time. So what the provision allows is it allows locally elected school boards to renew their operating levy without having to go to the public for a vote one time in the same terms and conditions that the voters had approved. So whatever the voters approved, when with two fiscal years ahead of when it would, um, expire, a locally elected school board can choose to renew that operating levy under the same exact conditions that the voters had approved. And this is a, a substantial improvement for so many school districts and for us particularly, our, uh, conditions are a ten-year operating levy at the maximum amount allowed by state law with the inflationary factor. So this board at some point in the future would be able to choose if you're so desired to renew that operating levy under those same terms and conditions. And again, this is something we have been working on, uh, for many years. This might be a great example of why you keep working on legislation, right? This has been in many of the ed organizations platforms for several years, and, and we're finally there. Uh, Special Education Cross Subsy, huge win, uh, forty-four percent reimbursement of the cross subsidy um, for the next couple of years, and then we'll move to fifty percent for Northfield Schools. That means one point seven million dollars in additional revenue, uh, next year. So we're very excited about that movement. Of course, we do think that we should get to the point where it has been promised by the federal government. We're not there yet, but this is a major step in the right direction. So that is the finance portion. Uh, the curriculum component may be a sweeping. Uh, in fact, I, I think that the REED Act uh, is one of the finest pieces of legislation that I have read. Uh, and I really congratulate Representative Edelson, who shepherded that bill and spent a lot of time with a lot of brilliant people trying to understand what was the best practices for literacy and how can we put those into state law? There's a lot of great compromises in terms of there will be, um, a required, you can pick from five different screeners. We will be required. We've always, we've screened kids a couple of times a year for a long time. Many things that are in this act are things that we have been doing for some time. We're ahead of the game on letters training. We're ahead of the game on screening. Um, but we're going to be able to do a little bit of comparison, I think, down the line because there's five different choices for screeners. It's not just whatever people want. Um, and then I think the other real genius of this bill is it does involve the University of Minnesota to do follow-up and research and support of it. So the REED Act, I think, is going to be something that's going to really transform literacy instruction in a positive way. I'm in the state, and the good news is that Northfield Schools are really ahead of this legislation in many ways. There are also three new, um, requirements at the secondary level. So we have offered a personal finance class at the high school. We will now be required to offer, uh, we will, students will be required to have a personal finance course while they're in high school. Uh, we will also be required to move civics, uh, to eleventh or twelfth grade. And then finally, um, ethnic studies, which new standards will be developed that will be required instruction in grades K through eight. And then in high school, we must offer something, and then students may choose to take that course. These three items, there's a lot of learning that we have to do yet when the Department of Education makes that legislation actionable and how we will have to implement it. So that's the next step in this. And then finally, under the policy, there's also just a, uh, quite a few. And then finally, under the policy here, there's also just quite a few different pieces of policy. I think one of the most significant ones is the, that now hourly school employees who do not work year-round will be eligible for unemployment insurance in the summer. And so for people who aren't offered comparable work, they will be eligible for unemployment. So these are basically the people who are the most affected by this would be our paraprofessionals and our school nutrition workers. Those would be the two largest groups of employees who would be eligible for this. This is an example of how lobbying and advocacy really works. Just toward the end of the session, this bill had no funding with it, and the final conference committee bill had a hundred-and-thirty-five million dollars in it to help schools pay for this over the next couple of years. It's allocated in the first year, but it can be spent over the next couple of years. Another policy change that is beyond just education, but is going to have an impact everywhere, is the implementation of paid family leave. That's a shared, it's a shared situation where both employer-employee will have an additional tax to be able to fund this state-paid family leave system. So that's something where there isn't additional funding specifically earmarked for that. And we will be learning about what, in fact, we're going to be attending a webinar on Thursday to learn more about some of the latest with that bill and how it impacts us. And finally, another area that is, everyone is really digging into is there's quite a few changes in student discipline and the requirements around student discipline. And so we are awaiting to see how some of those items are made actionable by MDE as well. And so those are items that are really, those are, I think, are the biggest items in the policy area. So I'm a big fan of the leadership expert, Peter Sengi. And so while I tell you I'm very excited about the opportunities that the legislative session poses for us, I'm fond of this quote, that today's problems are caused by yesterday's solutions. And so I know for sure we are going to get into next year, and we're going to start trying to implement these new requirements, and people are going to run into problems, and we will solve those problems, right? That's why there's a legislative session every year. So when we encounter things that are not maybe as they were intended, there's going to be some unintended consequences of these, of this legislation, we will certainly advocate for the changes that are necessary to make it better. But I just, I think there's no way you can have this kind of sweeping legislation and get everything perfect. So I think we should all go into it understanding that while imperfect, there's a lot of really positive things for public education in the K-12 education finance bill. And then, of course, something else that we're closely looking at is the Early Learning Bill, which has also got some very exciting things, and we'll update you on that at a future meeting. But that's my overview of what I think, my personal thing are the biggest components of the legislative session. And again, we just want to thank board members and members of the community. We had, Robert's going to talk about our Legislative Action Committee after this, so I'm not going to say anything. But we just had people who stepped up to the plate and did their work, and we made a difference. There are some key parts of this that are better than they were when it started and it's because people look at democracy, it is not a spectator sport. We have to get involved, and I think Northfielders know that and are willing to step up when asked. So that is my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then I know Robert's going to give a report on Legislative Action Committee.
Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I just want to say that for me, I'm actually most excited about having the formula be indexed to inflation, that there's a floor to that of two percent because so many years we've gotten one and a half percent, or, you know, they've been able to give us less than two percent. So that two percent floor is actually great news.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of comments and maybe a question. Yeah, I would think about where we were a year ago and how disappointed we were at this time a year ago. So I just, is everything going to be perfect? Probably not, but we're in a far better place this year than we were last year, so I'm appreciative of that. Question concerning the curriculum changes for those three pieces. What's the effect of your on that? Are they expected, expected to have that in place for this coming school year?
It is not for this coming school year, yes. It's, I think it's twenty-five, twenty-six.
I figured this would be too sudden, but just wanted to have that out there publicly for folks. At least a year out, if not two years.
Yes, I'm going to look it up right now.
Yeah, and then one, I don't want to call it a clarification, but only because I work in this field. Concerning the paid family leave, I believe there was six-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars that was put in for seed money to get the program up and running at this point. So that will help companies, I don't know how that interplays with school districts.
I don't know either.
From that, but I know the bill allows for six-hundred, roughly six-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars to get the program up and running. So benefits can be paid out January one, twenty-twenty-six, so it's going to be a couple of years to lead up to it. And then at that point, a payroll tax will be implemented for all businesses. Point seven percent, half of which will be paid by the employer, half of which by the employee. So there is some information out there already, but it's still a long runway, but a lot of education will have to be done, and it affects literally everyone in the state. So people should be aware of it.
And I think the key thing is that one was, I think, passed on Friday. If I'm not mistaken, it was, it was very late in the session, so I haven't seen all the details on it yet. But it is going to be, the good news for us is that Northfield School District provided leave for its employees for some time. We've had, I think, a reasonably, a very good leave program. And so I think that this may have more impact on some other systems than ours. It does have an impact for us. We've done some runs on what we think it will cost, but again, we will continue to work with it, and we will learn as everyone else does.
And I guess the other high point on that is I know there was early discussion in the session about being twenty-four weeks max for benefit, but it ended up passing that twenty weeks, so the benefit won't be as high as originally proposed. So just for those listening. Yep, any other questions or comments for Dr. Hillman? All right, we will move on to committee reports. Board member Robert Coleman will share the Legislative Action Committee report. Robert?
Thank you, Cory. So our Legislative Action Committee has worked to inform community members about how the legislative process works, updating community members on the progress of education-related bills and advocated for the needs of Northfield students. It's now in its third year and meets once every other Saturday morning, and we bring between twelve and eighteen, twenty people together on a Saturday morning, including some of these beautiful spring mornings we've had here. We have an open invitation to, as extended to community members, to attend committee meetings, and members are encouraged to share what they have learned and to engage their neighbors and friends as advocates for our schools with the legislature. Each meeting attendees have been, are provided with an update of the current status of education, finance, and policy bills. And then there's discussion, answering of questions, and then training about, you know, effective ways of communicating our public education message with the legislature. Each session then concludes with a call to action with a specific set of steps that committee members are urged to take as public education advocates before the next meeting. This legislative session, the LAC concentrated its advocacy efforts primarily on areas of school funding, one being increasing the basic formula by five percent for each year of the biennium and indexing it to inflation, to fully funding the specialized cross subsidy, and finally, limiting the addition of unfunded or underfunded mandates in state legislation. Our LAC members have persistently called, emailed, mailed our legislative leaders to promote the school funding platform. Attendees have shared their letters, emails, and phone scripts with their personal networks to encourage additional public engagement from our community. And members have also participated in the Minnesota School Boards Association, Minnesota Association of School Administrators Legislative Action Day, Legislative Day of Action in St. Paul, and we've held individual meetings with our local representatives. It's been, this is my second year being on this committee, and it's been, I've been really proud to be a part of this group to see the number of people from across our community who are willing to come together and engage with these issues on a Saturday morning is truly amazing. And we've heard from members of the legislature that they certainly know where Northfield stands on these issues. They hear from us and know our positions. For me personally, this year is the spring, as we've worked through the budget reduction process, this has given an outlet of working for real change to make sure this, we aren't looking at having to do this year, year after year. And that has been a real positive for me. This year's results may not be the Minnesota Miracle, but, you know, it's good funding, good change nonetheless. And I know that our local efforts have really helped make a difference. I, also serving on the committee are Claudia and Ben, and if you have anything like to add.
Yeah, thank you, Robert. That was a great summary of the work, and I would just say, you know, as the session comes to an end, I think there's an opportunity for, you know, those on the committee, but also those watching, you know, if there's something that you found favorable, you know, reach out to your representative and let them know that you appreciated what they moved forward this session.
Anyone have any questions for Robert, comments? I'll just say it's been great to see the work. I moved off it this year, but two years ago when Claudia, Chair Gonzalez George, and I joined the board, we teamed up with then-Chair Pritchard and Matt to start this group and opened it last year to more community members, and it's really become a force for the community. So it's great to see it continue to evolve, and obviously, three years of work. I like to think we played some part in this year's bill, so it was good to see. So thank you, Robert, for the report. We'll now move on to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Yeah, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Motion by Jenny, move by Jenny, second by Robert. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. All right, now it's time for items for individual action. We have six items for action tonight. First up is the iPad lease agreement. The board has requested to approve the iPad lease agreement as presented by Director of Technology Nate Knutson and Director of Finance Val Vernistor at the May eighth board meeting. Dr. Hillman, do you have any comments?
I don't have any additional comments. I think that Nate and Val did an excellent job presenting it at the last meeting.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
No.
We have a motion to approve. Robert, second. Amy, any discussion from board members? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Moving ahead to girls swim and dive cooperative sponsorship with Arcadia Charter School. The board has requested to approve a non-exclusive cooperative sponsorship of girls swim and dive with Arcadia Charter School, beginning with the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as presented at the May eighth board meeting. Dr. Hillman, any comments on this?
Again, no, we've got two of these cooperative sponsorships, one adding one and one dissolving one. So we presented it at the last meeting, and I'll certainly take questions after there's a motion.
All right, do we have a motion to approve? Ben, and a second. Amy, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Moving to the second cooperative we're talking about, the dissolution of the boys' cooperative sponsorship with Randolph Public Schools. The board has requested to approve the dissolution of the boys' hockey cooperative sponsorship with Randy, Randy, Randolph Public Schools, beginning with the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as presented at the May eighth board meeting. I don't believe you have any comments on this one?
I will just make a couple of comments here. Number one is that I want to remind people that this was really prompted by our placement in Class AA. There are two current Randolph students who are playing on our team, and we do feel badly about proposing this, but it is the best thing for the program overall. And I just do want to remind board members that because we're proposing this now, both school districts' boards need to approve the dissolution. If we approve and Randolph were to not approve, the cooperative stays together for one more year and then is dissolved at the end of next year. So just want to make sure everybody's clear about what those processes are for dissolving.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Jenny, and a second. Jeff, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. We'll now move ahead to the policy committee recommendations. There are four in front of us tonight. The board has requested to approve the updates to Policies two oh six, two eleven, two twelve, and two fourteen, as presented at the May eighth board meeting. Policy eight-ten, which had been previously scheduled for consideration at this meeting, will not be voted on tonight. I want to acknowledge the feedback that we've received from staff and students on this proposed policy. It's heartening to hear people, heartening to hear people engaged in the process ahead of action being taken by the board and not after the fact. As a response to the feedback we received, I know Dr. Hillman is in the middle of a series of nine listening sessions with district staff. I believe you've done six now, if not seven. And as usual, Dr. Hillman has been corresponding with the emailers, as I know many board members have as well. We take our actions as a board seriously, and we sincerely thank you for providing feedback. Dr. Hillman, any comments?
Nothing additional from the last meeting.
All right, do we have a motion to approve Policies two oh six, two eleven, two twelve, and two fourteen as presented? Ben, second. Robert, any discussion? Seeing none. We'll move ahead. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Moving ahead to the fiscal year twenty-four activity fee rates. The participation activity fee increase for both middle school and high school activities was part of the board-approved budget reduction process. The board has requested to approve the fiscal year twenty-four activity fee rates as proposed at the May eighth board meeting. Dr. Hillman, any comments on these?
No, I have none unless Val would like to make any.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the activity fee rates? Ben, do we have a second? Jenny? Any discussion from board members? Ben?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I did appreciate the feedback from the community as part of this process. I know, you know, maintaining the middle school activities was definitely an important thing that we heard about as part of the prioritization process. And so, you know, I feel like we heard the support of the community in terms of, you know, where these fees ended up and wanted to acknowledge that, I think, those that shared their thoughts with us.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Then finally, for items for action, we have the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four budgets for all funds. In the packet is the annual proposed budget for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The individual funds have been presented and reviewed in detail at school board meetings in the past few months. A summary of revenue and expenditure amounts are listed in that packet. On behalf of Chair Gonzalez George, I want to thank the board, the administration, the staff, the students, and the community for participating in this month's long conversation of setting the budget for the next fiscal year. Specifically, I'd like to recognize the work of Val Murstorf, the Director of Finance, for both working with everyone to find a path forward, but also for helping us understand the budget in terms that make sense for us to help make decisions. As we know, it's been a challenging two-year cycle for Minnesota districts, and we were not above that. We did stand out, though, because of our excellent fiscal management that allowed us to avoid deeper reductions that many of our peer districts incurred. That said, we must recognize the loss of programming and staff in this process. Through these difficult decisions, we are proving tonight a net positive budget for next year, which is exactly what we sought out to do. With recent positive news from the legislature, we can now plan forward, plan toward maintaining our stability into the future. Dr. Hillman, any comments?
Couldn't say that better, I couldn't have said it better myself.
Very good, I'll take that. Do we have a motion to approve? Val, do you have any comments?
I do, just a handful. So just a reminder that this is one of the primary tools to summarize transparent information for our staff, our community, and a variety of stakeholders. There are two things that I just want to point out that are different. One that's different from what was presented, and that is the general fund, fund balance percentage after the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I managed to adjust all of the formulas to adjust to the new calculation, except for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year where it really mattered. And so instead of the fifteen-point-oh-three, I believe, is what was presented, it'll be fifteen-point-nine. So that's a positive change, but I just wanted to call that that was different than what was presented on the eighth. And then, just to be very clear, I do not have the, any of the specialized cross-subsidy aid increase included in this budget, so that will be additional on top. There are also a variety of expenditures and things that are not included in here, but that is obviously one of the most That is obviously one of the most significant pieces. And so I wanted to be very clear that that's not included. Um, and that will be reflected in the revised budget as appropriate. So that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Val. We have a motion to approve? Amy, do we have a second? Ben? Any board members have questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion passes. All right. Next up, we have items for information. Uh, Dr. Hillman will present an enrollment report from the May twenty twenty-three numbers.
Tim, I'm going to plug in here. So you will see that this month's enroll, as, as typical toward the end of this, of the year. Um, you will see that uh the. Numbers at the end of the year here are quite similar to what they were in the previous month. So. The full-time uh calculation excluding early childhood and part-time independent study ALC students. Is just two less than it was last month. So very typical, two more than it was two months ago. So you'll see the last few months, we really stabilize in terms of uh the enrollment this year. So. Uh, that is the report at this point. And of course, at the June meeting, we'll give you the end of the year report.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Hillman? Okay, seeing none, we'll move ahead to future meetings. Uh, we're into the summer season, which is always nice. We have a couple of months with the twenty-one meeting. Our next meeting will be Monday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. That, of course, will happen here at the Northfield District District Office Boardroom. And following that, we have a meeting on July tenth, which is a Monday, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Uh, it's a regular board meeting here at the District Office Boardroom. And then we meet again Monday, August fourteenth. Twenty twenty-three, six P M at the Northfield District Office Boardroom. Sound very repetitive there.
Does.
A couple of reminders, we have the ALC graduation coming up that's scheduled for six P M Friday, June second. In the middle school auditorium for this event, board members sit in the audience. And do not need to wear their cap and gown. You can arrive just before the ceremony begins at six P M. This ceremony does take a little bit longer depending on the number of graduates there are. The ALC tradition is that they bring each student to the stage and the staff members share stories about each of those students. So it's a pretty moving ceremony. Uh, not many dry eyes, I I would say, in those events for the ALC graduation. And then, of course, Northfield High School's graduation is scheduled for two P M Sunday, June eleventh at Memorial Field. Please plan to arrive at the high school office with your cap and gown by one forty P M. Board members will join the procession with the graduates and sit on the stage during the ceremony. So we have a few new folks for that for this year. So it'll be, hopefully it's a good experience for you. I know it's. Always been good for the rest of us. That is all the business we have for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Jeff, do we have a second? Robert, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned.